Hello, hey!
Use the other one. We just use it now.
Alright, our leader is gonna come in very soon. And when he comes in, we're gonna bring the national anthem. And we expect us to wait. Hello, I don't like this microphone. Alright. Alright, so our leader was to be brought into here this afternoon. And we expect that when he comes in, we're gonna stand up and take the national anthem from there. So while we're waiting, let's give our famous person a win. And I'll try to go on the air, I want to broadcast live. But unfortunately, I'm having another problem here, but I know a little bit, no matter what it does. This is when you'll be after USA too. We never give up, we keep trying. This is a wartime radio, so not really worry about it. It's not a war. Alright, so let's wait for our next partner. Here, my boy. IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
One Family! One Family!
IPOB! IPOB!
I thank all of you here gathered today. I thank all of you here gathered today. I am pleased to be in New York City. I am pleased to be in New York City. And particularly impressed with the quality of people that I'm seeing here today. And particularly impressed with the quality of people that I'm seeing here today. I am humbled. I am humbled. Even my brother and sister-in-law. Even my brother and sister-in-law. Come, Rosalind, come! Come, Rosalind, come! He was with me in Israel. He was with me in Israel. I can tell you that he is one of us. I can tell you that he is one of us. Don't touch me by any time. Don't touch me by any time. I'm very happy to see all of you, very happy to see all of you. I'm very happy to see all of you, very happy to see all of you. And also Scott Berry is here as well, is that correct? And also Scott Berry is here as well, is that correct? Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see all of you gathered, our members as well. Good to see all of you gathered, our members as well. I believe we are live, is that correct? I believe we are live, is that correct? We must proceed without further ado. We must proceed without further ado. Because today, we will preach this gospel here in New York. Because today, we will preach this gospel here in New York. It's so good to the guy that passes your back. It's so good to the guy that passes your back. Here, and it says of everything he did, we're being supposed to be here in New York. Here, and it says of everything he did, we're being supposed to be here in New York. And I'm sure the whole world is listening, is that correct? And I'm sure the whole world is listening, is that correct?
Hundred percent. Hundred percent.
So also is my deputy teacher and foreman, who will ensure So also is my deputy teacher and foreman, who will ensure that this very program goes out to the ends of this very earth. that this very program goes out to the ends of this very earth. Because after today, things will no longer be the same, I assure you. Because after today, things will no longer be the same, I assure you. We must proceed, I'm sure you have a program. We must proceed, I'm sure you have a program. We will respect and adhere to our program here today. We will respect and adhere to our program here today. I believe that we have an MC, is that correct? I believe that we have an MC, is that correct? Who did introduction of the principal servants, if I may hand over the microphone Who did introduction of the principal servants, if I may hand over the microphone to the master of ceremony today. to the master of ceremony today. Is it it, oh my goodness. Is it it, oh my goodness. No, actually not. No, actually not. Okay, I'm gonna take it on my... Okay, I'm gonna take it on my... Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, Marzi. Thank you, Marzum. Marzi. Marzum. Our... Our... I still don't hear very good for my, or didn't hear us. I still don't hear very good for my, or didn't hear us. I don't even know where to start. I still don't hear us, I don't even know where to start. I'm so happy we are all here, gathered here for this celebration. I'm so happy we are all here, gathered here for this celebration. We are, I have to follow the protocol. We are, I have to follow the protocol. To say the introduction of the principal servants in New York and New Jersey. To say the introduction of the principal servants in New York and New Jersey. Ahah. Ahah. Um... Um... What I will do is I'll hand you over to the coordinator, the state of New York. What I will do is I'll hand you over to the coordinator, the state of New York. He will introduce the rest of the principal officers. He will introduce the rest of the principal officers. My name is John, because sometimes My name is John, because sometimes it's easy to deal with one person, then they take it over. it's easy to deal with one person, then they take it over. So Marzi, here's a question. So Marzum, here's a question. Please, introduce members of, this is, this is, let me introduce me. Please, introduce members of, this is, this is, let me introduce me. It's Marzi, here's a question, the coordinator, the state coordinator of New York. It's Marzum, here's a question, the coordinator, the state coordinator of New York. IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
You're welcome to New York! You're welcome to New York! Our leader is another great opportunity to have you in our midst. Our leader is another great opportunity to have you in our midst. I remember last time you came. I remember last time you came. Last time, we hosted you here, on your way back, the zoo arrested you. Last time, we hosted you here, on your way back, the zoo arrested you. So this is another opportunity to have you in our midst. So this is another opportunity to have you in our midst. And we appreciate your call. And we appreciate your call. You're welcome. You're welcome. IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
I want to use this opportunity to appreciate, you know, the, how would I put it? I want to use this opportunity to appreciate, you know, the, how would I put it? The strong bones behind me, you know, the people that made this event The strong bones behind me, you know, the people that made this event to be as you're seeing it today. to be as you're seeing it today. I am the state coordinator of New York, this is the name of it, is my name. I am the state coordinator of New York, this is the name of it, is my name. But I have other guys that work with me. But I have other guys that work with me. My deputy is here, Marzum Mariki. My deputy is here, Marzum Mariki. And the New Jersey, that is not up to, how many months? And the New Jersey, that is not up to, how many months? New Jersey is how many months? New Jersey is how many months?
Two months. Two months.
Two months, my day. Two months, my day. And you just, the New Jersey state coordinator. And you just, the New Jersey state coordinator. And you guys appreciate it. And you guys appreciate it. New Jersey is just three months old. New Jersey is just three months old. Three months! Three months! But they're doing great things. But they're doing great things. Can you say it? Can you say it? IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
Well, you're welcome. Well, you're welcome. We appreciate your coming. We appreciate your coming. Um, well, I can say that Marzum has said, I mean, what, why we're here today. Um, well, I can say that Marzum has said, I mean, what, why we're here today. And I hope we are, everyone is glad to be here to see our holy endow. And I hope we are, everyone is glad to be here to see our holy endow. So I'll hand you over the microphone to Marzum, here's a question. So I'll hand you over the microphone to Marzum, here's a question. Thank you. Thank you. Our leader, I want to appreciate that Hichia Zoum Our leader, I want to appreciate that Hichia Zoum is a coordinator from Boston Massacution. is a coordinator from Boston Massacution. So we say hi to him. So we say hi to him. IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
Be your welcome. Be your welcome.
Thank you for being here with us. Thank you for being here with us.
Bless you. Bless you. What is it? What is it? If you're coordinator here, can you... If you're coordinator here, can you... Alright. Alright. I'll start now. I'll start now. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Pastor Temos, can you please come and say hi to our people? Pastor Temos, can you please come and say hi to our people? And also Marzum Queens. And also Marzum Queens. This is a certain coordinator, Pastor Temos Kratos. This is a certain coordinator, Pastor Temos Kratos. All hail Biafra! All hail Biafra!
All hail Biafra! All hail Biafra!
We welcome all of you in the name of Yahweheshua. We welcome all of you in the name of Yahweheshua.
Thank you. Thank you.
IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
I'm really glad to be alive and to be here today. I'm really glad to be alive and to be here today. Because I think it's a great day, if not for you, for me. Because I think it's a great day, if not for you, for me. Because when I got into this movement, our leader was in the prison. Because when I got into this movement, our leader was in the prison. So I imagined how can I see him. So I imagined how can I see him. And seeing him today, I think we shall live longer. And seeing him today, I think we shall live longer.
Bronze coordinator, Marzum, if you're not here, deputy come. Bronze coordinator, Marzum, if you're not here, deputy come. Marzum, where's the deputy? Marzum, where's the deputy? Then the deputy, you come here and say hi to our people. Then the deputy, Obin, you come here and say hi to our people. That's the bronze deputy coordinator. That's the bronze deputy coordinator. Can you put your hands together for me? Can you put your hands together for me? IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
One Family! One Family!
IPOB! IPOB!
We are really happy. We are really happy. Marzum, may God continue to bless him and guide him and protect him. Marzum, may God continue to bless him and guide him and protect him. Um, this is IPOB Bronze Chapter. Um, this is IPOB Bronze Chapter. Of Bronze Order. Of Bronze Order. My name is Obin Valentine. My name is Obin Valentine. I'm from Oga, in Igo Telega government area. I'm from Oga, in Igo Telega government area. Oga Brothers, they are from land. Oga Brothers, they are from land. Thank you. Thank you. All hail Biafra! All hail Biafra! I will give the microphone back to the high. I will give the microphone back to the high. Because, can you guys forgive me? Because, can you guys forgive me? Because it's not that I forget my other coordinators, I just introduce these things. Because it's not that I forget my other coordinators, I just introduce these things. Forgetting those that are working with me, they will. Forgetting those that are working with me, they will. See, I confirm what I was saying. See, I confirm what I was saying. Only the mighty four are mighty men. Only the mighty four are mighty men. So I'm not the only one. So I'm not the only one. Marzum, we have to hand over the microphone for you to open the hall. Marzum, we have to hand over the microphone for you to open the hall. Pray for us, openly pray, and so we ask before this God. Pray for us, openly pray, and so we ask before this God. IPOB! IPOB! May we remain standing, please, because we need to pray. May we remain standing, please, because we need to pray. The standing here in front of me is an ordained man of God. The standing here in front of me is an ordained man of God. I will defer to him and ask him to pray beside me, please, he come forward. I will defer to him and ask him to pray beside me, please, he come forward. Thank you, my lady. To poor Kikera Biafra. To poor Kikera Biafra. The God of Biafra. The God of Biafra. The God of Israel. The God of Israel. The God of Abraham, our great grandfather. The God of Abraham, our great grandfather. The God of Jacob. The God of Jacob. Your children have gathered from the east, from the west, from the northern south Your children have gathered from the east, from the west, from the northern south of this country. of this country. And they have come to hear your second whom you have anointed and given to us. And they have come to hear your second whom you have anointed and given to us. This is our Lord's doing, this marvelous in our eyes. This is our Lord's doing, this marvelous in our eyes. We never had a freedom fighting like this. We never had a freedom fighting like this. And that's why many not understand. And that's why many not understand. They call him names, they have gone to kill him today by your super sonic power. They call him names, they have gone to kill him today by your super sonic power. You preserved him for us. You preserved him for us. So that the enemies in our lands shall be destroyed. So that the enemies in our lands shall be destroyed. In the name of Yeshua Hamashia. In the name of Yeshua Hamashia. They have gathered all the Islamic They have gathered all the Islamic on killing all second size faiths. on killing all second size faiths. To fill our lands, to pollute it, they rape, they women, they do all kinds of harm To fill our lands, to pollute it, they rape, they women, they do all kinds of harm to your own children. to your own children. And I know from heaven right now, you are hearing us. And I know from heaven right now, you are hearing us. And you are watching us from the dead heaven. And you are watching us from the dead heaven. And I know And I know you have never, and you will never let down. you have never, and you will never let down. You have never sent anyone and disappointed that person. You have never sent anyone and disappointed that person. And we are glad and privileged to have your servant. And we are glad and privileged to have your servant. The prophet of Biafra, Marzimande Kano, The prophet of Biafra, Marzimande Kano, who humble himself to take the call to go and serve the whole of the children of Israel who humble himself to take the call to go and serve the whole of the children of Israel that live in Biafra land. that live in Biafra land. In his soul, we commit everything we are going to do today. In his soul, we commit everything we are going to do today. We want you to be the first and the last. We want you to be the first and the last. We want you to be the leader. We want you to be the leader. We know We know your hands are on this man. your hands are on this man. And we know you will never fear him. And we know you will never fear him. You've never feared anyone. You've never feared anyone. And you are not gonna fear him. And you are not gonna fear him. You are not gonna fear IPOB. You are not gonna fear IPOB. We are going to win this war. We are going to win this war. All our enemies shall be confounded. All our enemies shall be confounded. They shall be destroyed. They shall be destroyed. In the name of Yeshua Hamashia. In the name of Yeshua Hamashia. We ask you, Lord, to reign, let your wisdom, your knowledge be a tower, your servant as in minister. We ask you, Lord, to reign, let your wisdom, your knowledge be a tower, your servant as in minister. Speak through him, minister to your people. Speak through him, minister to your people. Your people are stubborn, they don't listen, they don't hear us. Your people are stubborn, they don't listen, they don't hear us. But Lord, as in ministers today, take control of this town as ever before. But Lord, as in ministers today, take control of this town as ever before. And whole person, and speak to us. And whole person, and speak to us. Our women are listening up, our children are gathering together. Our women are listening up, our children are gathering together. Lord, they are waiting for you. Lord, they are waiting for you. We know you are going to fight this battle for us, so that the enemies, we know, for the first, We know you are going to fight this battle for us, so that the enemies, we know, for the first, for the last time, they will never try Biafra again. for the last time, they will never try Biafra again. They will never die the children of Israel. They will never die the children of Israel. They will know that we have a covenant, that no other person have. They will know that we have a covenant, that no other person have. And you are going to prove it. And you are going to prove it. You have done it in Biafra three places, three times or more. You have done it in Biafra three places, three times or more. When the son that represents Israel appeared on Biafra land. When the son that represents Israel appeared on Biafra land. Father, the way of Ubanan get Israel, you put it on this land. Father, the way of Ubanan get Israel, you put it on this land. Speak to us. Speak to us. The act of the covenant of Israel is resting on his shoulders. The act of the covenant of Israel is resting on his shoulders. And give it over to you for the personal protection. And give it over to you for the personal protection. In the name of Yeshua Hamashia. In the name of Yeshua Hamashia. Do it and have the glory. Do it and have the glory. I commit everything we are going to do here. I commit everything we are going to do here. Any enemy who disguise himself or has shamed and is here, confront them. Any enemy who disguise himself or has shamed and is here, confront them. In the name of Yeshua Hamashia. In the name of Yeshua Hamashia. Every enemy, they will go back the way they care. Every enemy, they will go back the way they care. Frustrate them! Frustrate them! Father, thank you for hearing us. Father, thank you for hearing us. In the name of Yeshua Hamashia, Jesus, we're going to do prayer. In the name of Yeshua Hamashia, Jesus, we're going to do prayer. IPOB! IPOB!
One Family! One Family!
We're gonna make some of our national anthem. We're gonna make some of our national anthem. All hail Biafra!
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 You may all be seated. Alright. If you wanna take a picture, they told you before, sit on your seat. You can do it from there, focus on there. We have official photographer here, if you don't get enough, a lot of things, show it. And make sure that you get as many pictures. And make sure that you get as many pictures as you want. We all want to take pictures too, me too. Everybody wants to. Alright, the next in the program, it says presentation of colonos. Dollye. Ojimaji, ah, wajimaji. You know, some we have to speak it in our own dialect. One of the dialects, Biafran language is a Igbo language. Igbo is a language in Biafran. And watching the player, unfortunately, they made it look like we are separate. No, we are separate people just have a speaking different dialect. And this thing that they bring in there, they call it colonos. It doesn't speak English, doesn't speak Arabic, and it speaks Igbo language. That's the only thing they understand. So Mazo. Oh, okay. Alright, let's see. Biafran. Ojimaji, okay. Okay. Oh, you can also not pronounce something. Alright. Oh, Wajimaji, Wajimaji State. Alright. Alright, Zomonye, Ojimaji, Ojimaji. Idoma, do we have any person from Idoma? Ijo. Oh, Muna, Yindi, Gure, Oyigure, Nereba. Ojimaji. Ojimaji, Nereba. Okay. Because, Ojimaji, Ojimaji, you know here, his royal. His Royal Highness. By the star, Shima Reago. Sub number, please. Oh, okay. Oh, my, a member of World People Congress now. Oh, wait up. Anybody from World People Congress that is present to us, I can give you some colonos. Omo wa, you may go back and go. I have a little person. Eh, the Ojimaji, I want a village, I want a job. Oh, what is Georgia, give me a money, get a, get a, get a, get a. I said, guys, you get it, you get it, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. So, oh, my, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a. I am, I am, I am, I am. Okay, I did, I did, I did. Oh, wait, oh, wait, bye. Eh, Nuku, eh, Nuku State. Ojimaji, Nereba. Eh, Nerebu.
All right, um, we're in the operation of the Air France crews. The vets. Just give us all many guide change here. All right, uh, thank you, the battery was running out. Okay, um, let me add something, our elders, veterans, they, they, you know, those who did what I did in the seventies. The veterans, will you please say, make yourself known, if the vet just, you don't understand what worries you, huh? Oh, okay. Yeah, I said, I said something, I said the way I did, I was a vet too, I was in the war. Fall in the war, I must say. Yes, and I enjoyed it differently, but today I'm still fighting the war anyway, but this time, not doing the physical, uh, gone by the microphone trying to do what I can do, because our leader taught us a new way of doing the same thing that we did before. And very effective, of course. In those days when I had to fight, I don't know why most of us came out, I don't have any friends that I lost through the war. And, uh, but today, we are still doing the same thing, they have not left us alone, nothing has changed. Some people were saying that we went to that war, uh, Chukotika did this, Chukotika did that, and there, he had no choice. If you were there, you would fight. Then I enjoyed it, I was quite young, gave me opportunity to live home. At least my parents won't tell me what to do, I remember when I, when I first came to my father to tell my father I was going to join the army. I just said, my father, I told him I wanted to be in the army. He didn't say anything, he just walked away, and my mother said, English one, you must not say a Chinese by army. My father didn't even respond, kept going. Mama said, you know, even now, well, because I'm a Chinese by army. Oh, yeah, by army, not say a Chinese by army. Oh, yeah, yeah, by army, I say a Chinese by army, I was already, eh, rude, they have me. So, it was fun, but today, we are doing the same thing, our leader has taught us a different way. It is happening to all of us. We're all right. See what's going on in our home? Right now, we look at ourselves as people who don't have a home, oh, my dear, I mean, when they talk of this, they say, eh, it doesn't concern them, okay? It does not concern you, but the one day, because it's getting to that, it's getting to a point where you won't even know where your family is. You are here now because they're calling you on the phone, you are talking to them. Always officially, you won't even know where they are, you will not be a happy person, no matter what you eat in this place, you will not feel good. So, veterans, you are welcome, we thank you, all of you, and all our elders also, we are welcome, you, let's give ourselves a hand of applause. All right, uh, what else we have on agenda now? It says inauguration of the IPOB Women Week, one Agapri Jess. One Buna. Are you here? Could you please come forward and take the mic, you want to speak to your women?
IPOB.
One Family.
IPOB.
One Family.
IPOB.
One Family.
First of all, I thank God for good life. My husband is here, he brought me here today. And, um, I thank God for everything that has happened in my life, and also my first son is here. I drag all of them here. My name is Bridgette Okaun. Um, the registered vice coordinator of, um, children's. I'm married to Tony Okaun. Um, he's from Hungary, I'm from Aljou.
And my husband.
From Hungary. Um, both myself and my husband, philanthropy is not a stranger to us, because we have been blessed by the Almighty God so much, that we have decided to use most of our income to help people at home. My husband has, um, educated two doctors whom we don't even know, we haven't seen them before. Only that we received a phone call that their fa- their father died on a road traffic accident while coming back, and they are serving in the family. So, when my husband received the call, he started training one. And the second one ran to the school and called my husband and said he wants to go to school too. And he decided to train them. On my own side, I can't even count them anymore, because most of them I hide it from him, so that he doesn't know. And, um, we spent our life trying to see what we can do, but no matter what we do, none of them is stable. We still go back to keep on helping and keep on helping, but it does not yield anything. When I heard of, um, what about our leader, even before I heard about him, I was praying, and I said, the only person that will save the problem in our land is God Almighty. Then eventually I heard about him and what he was saying, and I said, here is the man. Then when eventually I heard that, um, the python dam came to his house, I was depressed, because I thought that he was dead. Then from there, I heard about all the news that we are massacred and starved, because that was where I was brought up. I became depressed. I did not know what to do, I was confused, until the day I was told my girlfriend forwarded it to my phone about disappearance in Israel. That day, my heart was revived. And I have never stopped here and listening to IPOB. The radio, the Africa, since then. I, I did not know, I did not plan that I would am the person that will become called to speak about this today. But I know how much I feel about what was going on. So, when we went to Atlanta for the third day of the campaign, eventually I was spotted by our leader. So, our leader. Whatever you did for me that day and prayed for me, I want him to do the same thing to my fellow women, because after your prayer, my life was completely changed. When I came back on the first of June, because when I was given this position, I said, I don't know what to do, I don't know what to do. Then it was Father Augustine that we met at Atlanta, here it is. He called me and said, you know where you will start, go and let our leader pray for you. And after he prayed that prayer, that was a change. And ever since then, when I came back, I haven't stopped calling Father Augustine. Each time I will call him on the phone and I say to him, here is what I want to do, what you want us to do. And he has been so supportive and helpful, uh, together with other priests that I have contacted. So, I decided that whatever Omadika did for me, whatever he saw in me is also in all you women here. So, Father, please, I would like you to come out with me, we want to dance. Because Omadika is going to bless everybody, including those who are not here. Please, all women, can we stand and come, please? Please, let me recognize some of the women here. So, when I came back, I couldn't wait to start. One of my friends said to me, oh, you have to wait until they introduce you, I said, I'm going to start with what I know. What I know is that I want to increase the number of women we have. So, based on that, I had to start making calls. Um, in New York here, I have Ejeoma Wankwe, is she here?
She's not here yet.
Okay. Ejeoma Wankwe has been very, very supportive and very, very hardworking. And from the report that she gave me, she has found fifteen new members. Can we please start with that? Oh, are you?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, thank you, this is one of the new members. And I have, um, two people in New Jersey, I have, um, one person in Los Angeles, and I have, um, one person in Chicago, so I tried to get representatives from all these, um, states that, um, Onyendu was going, so that, um, anybody that they were able to talk to that accepts this, um, family, so that we can be integrated in the family. So, I am encouraging all of you to be part of this family, because God will bless you. You never know what you are missing if you are not part of the family. So, forget all about all the scandals that have been laid against IPOB, they are not true. And any of them that is true is just twisted. So, we want to save our country, it's very, very important. And all of you know what women can do. So, after this, we are going to meet, please do not leave, I need them in names, names of everybody, please. Thank you.
Wait, wait, wait. Wait, please. IPOB.
One Family.
Our mothers are here today. And I want to say, Tijukotika Piafra. For his guidance and his mercy upon our mothers who are here today. A representation of the fighting spirit that we are born with. Because everything that we possess in terms of our determination, our consistency, our quest for justice, we receive from our mothers. Our moral compass we got from our fathers. The same way that our mothers rose up in nineteen twenty-nine, the same way they rose up in nineteen forty-seven, is how they have risen up today in this very land of America. Therefore, we ask the Yahweh to Him to bless and to sustain them, to bring the same nurturing spirit, the same guidance, the same love and affection that they have for us, their children, to see IPOB as their child and for them to nurture it accordingly. We pray for your mercy to be upon them. Because I said it before we started, that only two things are missing in this restoration effort. The involvement of our women and also those who live in the United States of America. Here today in New York, both of those things are happening, which is a very strong indication that Piafra is indeed very, very close. I charge you, Elohim, because we know how we pray. We know our hearts, because nothing is hidden before thee. To infuse your spirit of togetherness and sisterhood into this very pillar of IPOB that we are nurturing today here in New York. That you may bless them and guide them exceedingly. That you may give them wisdom and understanding. That you may give them strength and fortitude to balance their affairs of this very noble organization until Piafra is restored and beyond, in the name of Chukotika Piafra, have you prayed?
Our nation, Piafra, our land, Piafra. Our nation, Piafra, our land, Piafra. We are fighting for a nation full of love. Our nation, Piafra. Got enough hope and peace and joy. Our nation, Piafra. No matter what you have or where you are. Our nation, Piafra. Everybody listen together. Our nation, Piafra. No one is to be rejected, no one is to be neglected, no one is to be the best that's. All in Piafra land, it's time to give justice and chance. So, I'm rejected in one. It's not our nation, we are fighting for a nation full of love. Our nation, Piafra. Got enough hope and peace and joy. Our nation, Piafra. No matter what you have or where you are. Our nation, Piafra. Everybody listen together. Our nation, Piafra. We are supposed to have peace, no more oppression, nobody be wrong of a children. If you try and reach ease, no more gain to politics, just no vanity. Hope for humanity, that's how we support. We are fighting for a nation full of love. Our nation, Piafra. Got enough hope and peace and joy. Our nation, Piafra. No matter what you have or where you are. Our nation, Piafra. Everybody listen together. Our nation, Piafra. We are one is strong.
All right, all right, our mothers, they've done it so well, and I trust that anything they get involved in, it's time to go, they have time to move, things have been moved. All right, um, next on the program, we have, uh, our Reverend Father Austin. Could you please come here, come out here, sir, and address us a few minutes, and tell us a few things, three words of encouragement? All right, yeah. All of Piafra. IPOB.
One Family.
IPOB.
One Family.
Onyendu. You are most welcome.
My name is Reverend Father Augustine Adinunagwa. Father Adinunagwa is from Idem Millet Province, Ombalala, Piafra Land. Um. Onyendu, I hope you don't mind, let me speak to people. One issue. Um, I was making service of calls just for this occasion, in New Jersey and New York. And I got series of questions. Each time I would refer the person to come here and ask our Onyendu for the answer. But one came to me that I could not refer to him. And this one was, one of my good friends asked me, Father, why are you in IPOB? Very serious. And I was like, why do you ask? Because, as far as I know, IPOB means Saint Dependent People of Piafra. My apologies. Indigenous people of Piafra. And I said, you are six people here, dependent people of, of Piafra, now, if I never in the air, but, you'll be dependent of Nigeria. So, the guy was here, that's the one I know. Always, yes, the answer told me, I hope, because you, you know that IPOB was prescribed. I said, hmm, now you are talking, and he said so many things. So, at the end, I said, I hope you don't mind if I ask you one or two questions, he said, no problem. Said, very good. Number one, I know your first name, I know your last name, do you have a middle name? He said, yes, a very chairman, actually, he said he has two. One from the father, one from the grandmother. And I said, very good, and he loved the names given to you by your parents, he said, yes, me too, I do. I said, now your parents are no more there, and the number one enemy of your family comes and comes to you. Forget about their parents, forget about chairman. I want to give you a new name, that henceforth, your name will be Anekreja. I said, would you answer it? This is your number one enemy, who doesn't want you to leave. And his name, he changes his name, given to you by your parents, and calling you Anekreja, would you answer it? He said, no, said, very good. Why would my enemy, the full African federal government, tell me that I'm a terrorist and I will accept it, why should I do it? If you accept it and give it to you by your enemy, then you have given your enemy the moral authority to control you. And I told him that when your enemy says you are a terrorist, you should turn around and tell him, he is a devil's secret. Give him a more serious name. That's how, that's how you count time. Such an idiotic, uh, 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 semantics. I said, but aside from it, I said, do you know why IPOB was prescribed by the federal government? Said, because you know, said, okay, well, you are discussing now. IPOB was prescribed, let us pay attention. Not because of these young guys who are protesting on the streets of Piafra Land. IPOB was prescribed precisely to get the prominent people of Piafra. As simple as ABC, because that is a system of Flanis. What, DSS will just knock at your door. Sir, this is your ID from DSS. What did I do, when we get to the office, you will tell you. And then you get to the office, they tell you you are sponsoring a terrorist organization. And they can fabricate anything, and before you know it, they do a well with you, you are gone. And they will continue like that until they pick all the prominent people in Piafra Land, then they have succeeded. It's not because of the young people on the streets. I told him, look, I studied social justice and peace at Fulham University here in New York, up to PhD level. So, I perfectly understand the signs and symptoms of genocide. I perfectly understand the signs and symptoms of ethnic cleansing. I perfectly understand the signs and symptoms of religious cleansing. I know that these guys are making a terrible move to finish us. Then I told him, you are here in US, you are very successful. You may think, okay, when they are killing the prominent people in, 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 in Piafra Land, you may feel, I'm fine, I'm comfortable here. And see, what happens if when they finish with the prominent people in here in Piafra Land, and they change the name of Nigeria to Federal Islamic Southern of Nigeria. And they change the name and change their passport, and then when you go to Nigeria, you get a new passport, they tell you, if you don't answer a Muslim name, you are not getting a passport. I said, what do you do while abroad? So, you no more come home. You no more go home. We need to understand the signs and symptoms of these things when they are coming. But our parents will tell us. The Flanis have given us all the signs and symptoms of where they are coming from, where they are, and where they are going. And we have refused that they have to have. Despite the fact that a God-sent man, who has a name they cannot, who saw this long time ago, when the symptoms were coming, he was hammered towards. And many of us felt that we are insulated from the problem, because we are thousands and thousands of miles away from home and to be a less. I told the guy again, another reason why I joined IPOB is this. When the three most important institutions in my life are under threat, I have no option but to fight like there's no tomorrow. My family is under threat. My family is under threat, they gave me life. My community, which is Biafra Land, is under threat. Biafra gave me identity. Our people say. My king dread, my family, my community gave me identity. And then as an idol, I have committed my life to serve the church, even the church is under threat. I say, "Why would you, why, how comfortable would I be, I be sitting back? The three most important institutions in my life, my family, my community, my church are under threat of extinction and you expect me to sit back and be saying the rosary alone?" You must be, I didn't tell him this, but I said, "It is difficult for me to accept" that this is time for me to fight, if not for anything, to defend these institutions. And finally, I told him, why I joined I D O B is that after the five hundreds in 2017, we all came to New York to march and I encountered seventeen priests who came that day. Three of my friends grew from Toronto, Canada. They came for that marching and after that they went back the same day, they just came for the march. And after the five hundreds, I told this my friend, I was getting depressed. I was hearing of depression, I never expressed it until that time because I was like, "This is an area I studied." And look at what is happening to my people, what can we do? What can I do? I had no idea what to do. I called up my friend, they found, yes sir. I said, "Tell, get me, connect me to the World Evangelist Congress, I want to know what they are doing." Because this thing cannot continue like this. Through, uh, uh, Dr. Kendi, when we were able to reach out to World Evangelist Congress, the executives to have a meeting was difficult. My friend was willing to pay for the executives, but they live all over the place to come so that we have a meeting and figure out what to do. It wasn't possible. And I was asking around, what can be done? Until I met a friend of mine who introduced me to Mazinamdekanu's speeches. After listening to him, my mind started to come in. I was already, I was already gone. And then eventually, through my friend, Simeon Egan Yom, I got wind of I D O B in New York. I told him, "I am going to New York to register, I will be coming from New Jersey to New York for the Biafra I D O B." And then after we did this a couple of months, we said, "You know what? We are going to have our own New Jersey I D O B." My dear brothers and sisters, I say, "Sister, let me tell you this. You have to, you have to, nobody deceives him or herself. If you are not aware of what is happening back to back home now, you must be out of the mind." Let me tell you this, since I joined I D O B, my mind relaxed. Why? Because, you know, there is nothing as bad as you go to the hospital, they run all the tests, nobody knows what they are suffering from. Nobody knows what have to help you, you are helpless and hopeless. But once you get somebody who tells you there will be a way out, what happens? Healing starts from that moment. I started getting my spiritual, moral and, and physical healing the moment I joined I D O B. Because I started getting the sense, I started getting the sense that there the hope is not lost. That there is always a safe line at the end of the tunnel. And so, my dear brothers and sisters, I'm not advising you to join I D O B. I am comfortable that I love it, I don't know about you. But guess what? If you are gathering all the dots that are in the social media, from Facebook, from Instagram, all this is, the vote is pounding on your head, the more you gather all these things, the more you get confused. But when you get to I D O B, I D O B will begin to sort things out, give you the clarity of how, where we are going, the hope that is there and the hope that is not there. It is helping me and sustain, I have been a happy man and nobody, I repeat, nobody can stand on my way in doing whatever it takes to be a member of I D O B. Yes, that was good, that was very, very good, that was wonderful. That's, that's the way, most of us felt our way, yes, so I was unfortunate that we, I wouldn't say we joined the I D O B early enough, no. At first, my same brother was always bothering me, listen to this man, I said, "I've heard all that from our ZBK, I don't want to bother." He said, "Brother, please, please, I know you just listen." And I started listening, you know, it's like I got addicted. Every day I will listen, every day I will listen, but I never thought about joining I D O B, I was only listening to Mazie. I had a free listening until the, I didn't hear his voice and I asked my brother, "Uh, what happened there?" "The, the Mazinamdekanu is not talking today." He said, "No, sometimes he allows you to before to do the talk." I said, "Okay." And I kept listening, then I took my phone house, that our lady had been arrested. He said, "Who arrested? Yeah, the D S S are left there in Nigeria." I called my brother and said, "I want to join I D O B because this is the time." Now, if they arrested him, it means somebody is listening to him. He's not just rabbal rabbal, he's angry and he's talking, that's all he got him. So that man, it's a serious thing, so I have to join, that's how I became a member of I D O B. And we'll remember forever, my mother wanted to do what he says. All right, we have to call up my brother, another brother of mine here, Evan, go for it to come up here, to call him please. Evan, are you there? Yes, he has to speak to us, talk to us about Council of Elders and Veterans. Yes, he has given time to speak before I would hand the microphone over to our leader to, to do some talking for us. I know another ones are waiting, we are ready to ask questions. Write it down because when you get there, you will forget. All right.
I D O B.
One family.
I D O B.
One family.
One family.
I D O B.
On behalf of the veterans, on their behalf, that they are not, I should make a leno. Want to cover the flag to continue the struggle. And on behalf of the straightest of elders, I D O B, they will go, customary government and Nigeria, they will represent the day, um, United States and Europe, I should make a leno. They are mad, only shift para, ni kunyene. Why does that have a blind over run? Oh, because of when they are here, now losing work. Oh, work here, tum tum tum, but all this in now, oh, when they, I call them. We go, and now I'm not there. Oh, no luck, oh, my body, child, you are you, because of them, they are losing their lives. The I D O B, because, oh, yeah, they're wrong, they believe in wrong, in India. I'm a Galaman as Nigeria, I'm a China, Biafra. Because I have shared, you share the game, pardon, I D O B, they believe in Nam, pro Biafran, pro, uh, Biafran groups, we are all saying the same thing and I am going to go, and then you know, they are, Mazinamdekanu. Because, oh, yeah, we are really old and perform and do our duties. So on behalf, on behalf of the Biafran veterans, now I, straightest of elders, people, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, my brother, and Deewul, thank you very much. All right, we'll see you moving on. This time I have to call the, the New Jersey coordinator, New Jersey, please, you have wanted over here five minutes, come and speak on behalf of your people before we continue. The same presentation that they wish to do, so over to you.
I D O B.
One family.
I D O B.
One family.
One family.
I D O B.
Um, as Reverend Father said before that we all was, you know, doing a meeting with New York and we keep on asking New York, what is going on in New Jersey, they began to tell us that they don't know what's going on. We said, "Okay, we are gonna find what is going on in New Jersey because we are from there." So as time goes on, then Reverend Father and Mazie Simeon I, well, we, we decided to say, "Let us set up a family, I D O B family in New, in New Jersey." Alongline, I couldn't believe that people in New Jersey, they were eager, you know, looking for I D O B family. So, um, as time goes on, we began to pass our information concerning I D O B to few people. I couldn't believe that the people start calling us, "Where are you people? Where do you do your meeting, what's going on, what is time, this and that?" So this is how I D O B New Jersey starts today. And they are working day and night to make sure that they meet up the I D O B demands. And they keep on saying that when they finish what they are planning and what their movement, that the United States I D O B will know that something new from New Jersey that will happen. Right now, um, some of them were saying, "Why not Oyendu come to New Jersey?" We said, "No worry, we have to take permit from Oyendu." Okay, so maybe we are late, but I hope, uh, it's not the people that first run, they might not be the one to be frustrated. So we started at least three to four of us right now, but I believe, I'm telling you, we are the, we are doing great. Um, Onyendu sir, um, on behalf of the family, I D O B New Jersey, we have, um, a symbol that we want to present to you. Uh, we want to show it as appreciation for you to come into visit us here in the United States of America. And we are glad because your coming here is close for us.
Yes.
Uh, please, all I D O B officials, you stand up, please. Any, every, any Biafran from New Jersey have to stand up. Biafran from New Jersey, you have to stand up, if you know that they coming from New Jersey, please stand up. Onyendu sir, we, the family of New Jersey I D O B, we, we are giving this symbol for your great job and great work for Biafrans. We say, "May God, you go to Kabiama bless you and lead you and bless your family." He said.
I D O B.
One family.
When I was coming here, I had the impression that I was coming to see only our people in New York. But as I came here, the added bonus of New Jersey has uplifted my spirit and my soul and I am overjoyed, overjoyed. And the same way that this very spirit moved around some of you in New Jersey, so do I pray that it will move across the fifty states here in the United States of America. Only two things are holding us, I think we've solved the first one, our mothers are now coming out. The next one is that this gospel of redemption must permeate every society, every community where our people are domiciled in this great country. Because, Tukodi Kabiama will give us Biafran. That those of you in USA will lead us to it. That is your responsibility. Thank you very much, one second, Mr. President. Yeah, thank you, Amadike. All right, all right, New Jersey, New Jersey. Yes, all the motor, it's very good, I'm very impressed. I'm very, very impressed. Okay, this time, our people is okay, we have to, I know many of us here are so eager to hear Oyendu say something. Just me too, our brother also, no one. Uh, radio here, recording everything, so we are so played, uh, you know, recorded program from Radio Biafra USA Two. We are here hosting our leader today. So, uh, right now, I have to present the microphone to our leader for the gospel of the day. Mazie, your turn.
Thank you very much, thank you.
I D O B.
One family.
I D O B.
One family.
I D O B.
One family.
One family.
I D O B.
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 Please sit back on, before I proceed, as it is customary within I D O B, when you work for I D O B, you are working for heaven itself. They live great in Agarose because we are here doing the will of Elohim, the will of God, the creator of the heavens and the earth. That is why we see things that ordinary people cannot see. That is why we say things four, five years before they happen. That is why anything we say comes to pass. That is why anything we say comes to pass. I want to acknowledge two people here. Is Mama Africa here somewhere? Please come, come to me here. Come here. Come, come to me. Come to me. And our dear brother, Jai, on Zizi here? Jai, where are you? Great woman, yes. Great woman, yes. I, this is one of us touched by the spirit. And I'm humbled to actually be in her presence today because she responds dearly. You must commend her for what she is doing because she is one of us. And in IPOB, there are Biafrans. In IPOB, there are detectors. But when we say that somebody is one of us, it means that they are faultless. It means they are resolute. It means that their spirit is indestructible. It means I only have one vision. That vision is to restore Biafran nothing else. That is why I commend her to all of you. May God bless you. May God, may God bless you. May God bless you. Thank you very much, thank you. As we continue to wait, I want to acknowledge Jai, of course. And then he must proceed to preach this very gospel as I have been mandated in spirit to do. I am here to cure many diseases. All your name, Nenaya, and the Bani, I knew who Apple. It's passing. You see me? I will cure all of that today. You know, things have changed when a reverend father will come out to say that even himself was born again to join IPOB. Normally, I wouldn't start this way, I will preach. But I will go to start from the back to begin to lay a very credible foundation as to all the unfounded allegations and innuendo against this very great family, the greatest of its kind, and we are on the face of the earth. We are the largest mass movement in the whole world by none. Only IPOB. Somebody heard something, I am sure some of you invited some people, and they gave you excuses out of fear and cowardice. What they are saying has no justification. But what they want to do is that means they will come near to do is to allow their prejudice to overcome them. Because what you have accomplished, what IPOB New York has done, what IPOB New Jersey has done, what IPOB USA is doing is something that they themselves have never do, not today, not tomorrow, whatever. And because of that, because they cannot do it, they had to look for a way to try to discourage others from joining, to try and destroy it. But they cannot because this is a divine project. Before I came here, I asked our sister, Nenaya, I am still on the defense fund. Defense fund down, I'm still on it. How many of you here paid defense fund? I want the camera to capture it, please. How many people here paid defense fund? I have the list here. To be realistic, I have the list. I have the list with me before you raise your hand up. These are those that paid for defense fund in America. I asked the Nenaya before I came here, I don't refer to my own when I'm preaching, but I have to today because it is an exception and it was sent to me. In the whole world, 50 countries out of the 88 where we are domiciled responded. And in total, the amount we contributed to us, our defense fund is 100 and 58,406 euros and 47 pence. What do you call pence in Europe? Is it cent? It is here from our computer printed. I said 100 and only. This is not up to the amount we use to chase away full army from Anam. Those billions and billions have been lying to you about trying to destroy you from saving yourselves. It is here. And how much did USA pay? Somebody here should know. How much did USA pay towards our defense fund?
2,000 something.
But the greatest gossipers are in America. The greatest peddlers of lies and deceit that are here, here in America. The same way they lied to my brother Scott Berry, lied to him about me. Somebody who was in prison. You know, when you lie and lie against somebody who is in prison for your sake, God will never forgive you. All that defense fund, do not forget. Those that did not pay for defense fund that does, ask me about it. Today, you have compared me to tell full army that you have no money. Now they know. You can now see it. 2,778, all of USA, and what was our defense fund? And you know the funniest thing? With the exception of. Give me half one again. I have no secret, if you know me. I tell you the truth always. That is why I'm alive. Chukwadikabiama said, if you speak the truth always, I will preserve you. That is why I read the longest Psalm in the Bible, Psalm 719, every night. I have been reading it consistently for five years without fail. As long as you remain truthful, there is no plan from the enemy that will prevail against you. I have come to New York. I went to Atlanta. I went to Los Angeles. I traveled to Houston. I went to Chicago. In between, I went to Toronto, Canada, and I'm in New York. Why don't you ask yourselves, where are those gossipers Kevin Ham? Where are they? They have come up with a new one. The new one is that IPOB was prescribed or that we are a terrorist group. As our reverend said, somebody told him that they prescribed. And they said these people are educated, that in America they enlightened. And yet, some people cannot reason properly. The full army that declared IPOB a terrorist group. Why haven't they declared full army headsman a terrorist group? Do you know that Boko Haram has not been designated a terrorist group? Do you know? But IPOB was designated a terrorist group because they know that some of you are cowards. You think they don't listen? Britain is the one advising them. Britain knows that a majority of our people in America are cowards. Once you say no, the candidate terrorist, they will not longer support him. Because they will be afraid if they follow him, they will be arrested. Who told you that? But they are not going to arrest you to travel because they in IPOB. Who told you that? Because they know that you are fearful. We say that Eurobans are cowards, that we are the greater cowards. We hide behind every reason not to support a great movement like this. Every reason in the world we manufacture. Every excuse we manufacture to support. Now they are called terrorists. But the full armies that are killing you every blessed day, as the reverend said, the churches under attack. Some of you go to churches. Don't you? You go to different churches. Anybody that goes to a Eurobans church, he will be ashamed of himself or herself. I didn't say you shouldn't marry the mom or buy him to the bank. I said their church, and do you know why? Do you know why you shouldn't go to their churches? Because they will have all former Muslims, all of them. I said all of them. Do you think a lot of them? Every known Eurobans preacher was born Muslim. But they use their media preponderance, their excessive representation within the Nigerian media space to convince you. The same way they convince you now that talking about rape is more important than talking about full army coming to your villages to kill you. They manipulate your brains. They make you think that miracle is only possible in Eurobans churches. And then you go there, and what do you come with? Is everything okay? Because we are Biafrans and we are well behaved. Is there anybody here not aware that full armies are in our villages? Who here doesn't know? Is there anybody here who does not know that full armies are in our villages? And who do you expect to fight them? You get some hunger from America. Can you fight them from New Jersey? Can you fight them from New York? Can you fight them from Chicago? Who are the people on the ground fighting for it today in Gelfa? Anybody that gossips to you from today on was asked a simple question, why were you not at the town hall meeting to ask this ridiculous question now? Some people don't appreciate the level of sacrifice that needs to go into any freedom fighting movement before liberty can be assured. Some of you are in America, but you don't know American history. This land you are seeing today flowing with milk and honey, people fought for it. And do you know why Elohim said to Moshe, that is Moses, by anywhere, I have given you this land for free, but you must fight for it. Do you know why? So that the children of God will not be people of superstition. Because if you got to the land for free, anytime you ask for something else, you think you come for free. Isn't it? That is the basis for superstition. The which has no place in the life of a true believer. I don't believe in superstition. I believe in reality, that thing that we can do for ourselves. And I say it with every degree of authority, as I say every word that I go to, that without IPOB, without IPOB, the full army will not call full army. There will be nothing you can do about it. You know, America, if there is a handbag. And our land will be gone. And who do you think will save you? Would the army save you? Would they save you? People say, oh, they're intelligent, Igbo's are very intelligent. Our Biafrans are very intelligent people. Two fundamental mistakes we have done in our time. Maybe that is why God is angry with us. If you know you cannot do what IPOB is doing, if you know you cannot do what Namdekan is doing, stay by the side and appreciate them. Don't allow your envy and your booney to not put on one to override your sense of reasoning. Some people get up in the morning, they see how well IPOB is doing. In the evening, they form an association. They do this time, they tell you, oh, come, let's unite. Let's unite with who? What have you done before? Can you come to New York and come for a town hall meeting and the hall will be filled like this? Why don't you come and join us? Why must you be outside seeking for relevance? Asking us to come and. Because inside us, we harbor the deadly seeds of jealousy, envy. And it is very, very destructive. That is why Igbo men or army, they are total man. Can sit down there and allow IPOB that is not carrying any weapon to be prescribed? We are there as full army headsmen that are killing us, contaminating our land, and we are now negotiating with them, which portion of land to give to them? Do you understand what I'm saying? Are you aware that full armies are killing people? Are you aware that priests are dying and they are being killed? Are you aware that Jews are dying and being killed? Are you aware of it? Have you heard of anywhere that IPOB went to start a committee to kill the people there? But Igbo men, Igbo men, Ndiibo, sat down. Sat down and decided that it is better for their political careers for IPOB to be prescribed, for Namdekan to be killed. Do you know why I say this, wherever I go to? Because we will not forgive them. And I'm saying it now, if you are going to cry for them, start crying from today. We will not forgive them. They will pay very dearly for their betrayal of our people. Everything I have told you has come to pass. You know that Chukwudikabiam is marvelous. I am telling you the truth. If God doesn't love IPOB and what we are doing, how come everything we say in exact precision, happens exactly like that? I told Nigerian Bar Association, R.A.S. in J.A. I said to them, I have been given two unconditional releases from the court. And the Yorobah refused to put pressure on the government using your good offices to compel them to release me from prison. That one day this government will come after you. Go and ask them. A maparafa will sign the pre-statement, it was purpose, go and Google it. Everything I tell you, you can Google it and see if it is true or false. And I said to a man, "If you fail to compel the courts to prevail on that when the general of the Federation to order my release, given to outstanding court judgments, that you will suffer for it." Ask him, and he was removed. This great sort of office will be moved. This great sort of office. The same thing I told Ogorocha and his friends. That shame shall befall them. And you know how they played their politics in the zoo? He contested for Senate, isn't it? And he rigged himself into powers that nobody do. And they will tell his certificate. And they raised this top for him, doing it like this. "Do you want it?" He was saying, "Yes, yes, I want it." They said to him, "Go and denounce Yorobah presidency, 2023 will give it to you." And he did, gladly agreed. That you have been reduced to begging for what should rightfully belong to you. And there was a statement they issued today again. Do you know what they said? In fact, if a Nigerian, raise your hand up here, please. Do you know what they said today in the zoo? Do you know the depressing arrogance of Fulanu cattle heads? The worst is that they go to school. They are migrants into the zoo, God Nigeria. They are not even indigenous to the place. And they have gone across the left and break of northern part of the zoo. They have opened their progress for their fellow Fulanis to come from Mali to kill you in your towns and in your villages, that your land may be taken over. Don't be rude, what I'm saying, go and ask the Togolese president, he said it yesterday. Togolese president said it yesterday. And this morning, Fulan people said openly, "No Christian can ever become the president of Nigeria." Open this open. Is it banked, is it banked or what today? And some of you say you're Nigerians, oh, we won't support IPOB. That America will not save you. Because you would have no way to go to. And let me tell you something about white people and how they reason. Once they know you have no way to go to, you are in serious trouble. Do you know that? Jews, we are killed in Europe, even during the Spanish position, right up to the very awful above Hitler. They were killed because they felt that European Jews had no way to go to. The same thing shall be for you. And the maparafas have been praying over this and saying, "Chukwudikabiam, do you want to destroy us?" Because people going through what we are going through today and have consistently refused to reason. There must be, there is destruction, isn't it? You are an endangered species. I am telling you the truth. No amount of offer while you dance outside can save you. No amount of village meeting you hold outside can save you. No amount of award abroad can save you. The only way you can sustain your relevance is by making sure that the land you come from is liberated and free. Some people think that Yorobahs will fight, is that correct? Will Yorobah fight? And do you know why they will not fight? Their reason is too far. And let me tell you the truth today. Everybody in that devil's situation called Nigeria, when they talk about what Nigeria, keeping Nigeria one is for a reason. They know that without Biafrans, this thing that Fulanis are doing is like picnic. They will stop all of them. All of them will go. So we are their insurance. We are their insurance in that zoo called Nigeria. Us. Yorobah would not want Nigeria to divide. Because if Biafra goes, Fulanu will come and live in Lagos and think, "Why would the army of Lagos now?" Yes, ma'am. That's army of Lagos. Can they talk? Because half of Yorobah is Muslim, understand this very well. And as every Muslim knows, your allegiance is to Saudi Arabia. And Iran. And if you are in the zoo and you are from Yorobah land and you're a Muslim, your primary allegiance lies with the Sultanate in Sokoto. Do you know that the Sultan is the head of Muslims in the zoo? Do you know that? Do you know that no Yorobah man can go and hold Juma players on Friday in the north? Hey, they don't even know that. No Yorobah a man can walk into a mosque in the north of the zoo and conduct players. Impossible. That they are confident remaining as slaves to the Fulanu. Because of their fear of Yorobah. Maybe because we are blessed. I said to the world that the Jews of Europe went through the same thing. God in his infinite mercy will keep on blessing Biafrans. You know Chukwudikabiam can be angry with us as much as he likes. But because his word is here and amen, once he has given you a blessing, he cannot take it back. Are you following me? Once you are under the special almighty of heaven as he, Biafrans are, it can never be taken back, that we shall continue to suffer until we discover who we are and remedy some of the nonsense that the creation of Nigeria has brought us into. Who created Nigeria? Who created the zoo? Is Luk'ad from Allo? Is Luk'ad from Zambala? Is Luk'ad from Obomoshon? Now can you tell me the reason why Africans are defending something that they did not feel? When they call you a slave, you shouldn't blame them, they are right. Oh, my God, I'm afraid, but I won't say it because kids are here. It's for adults only. Can you tell me the reason why you allowed people to come from Europe into your land to tell the men to answer? Can you expect that to be pleased? Is India developed? Is India developed? Is Japan developed? Is Singapore developed? Is Malaysia developed? How about, um, common Philippines, it developed? Do you know one thing they have in common? They are proud of their heritage. They are proud of who they are. Because some people see us the way we are with our Kiba and our Talita, they say they are giving us to Israel. That we are not Jews. And what I'm saying to you today was exactly what I said to the students of Tel Aviv University when I gave a lecture there last year, November, if I'm not mistaken. And I said to them that the only place on this earth, the only place in the whole world that lends pretense to the assertion that the Jews were in Egypt is only in Biafra land. I repeat, the only place for one in where there is verifiable proof and evidence that Biafrans, or if I say that Jews were in Egypt, is only in Biafra land. And they asked me why. I said, "Because the same three of pyramids you have in Egypt, you have in Yorobah state." Some of you don't know what a pyramid is. You know pyramid? In Egypt? Do you know the level of scientific knowledge that has to go into the construction of one pyramid? The exact measurements that accompanies it, are you aware of it? Those things are where you come from. It is not in Israel, not in Ethiopia, not in Eritrea, but in Biafra land. Some of you have forgotten that we had a dumping out of Chukwu. They talk to you, they lie to you, they say it's in Yorobah. As the one man told you, or asked you to believe. Our temple was there to worship one through God in heaven. That's why it's called out of Chukwu. Chitabuli, are we in Chukwu? There are other lesser Jesus, is that correct? They wear Chukwu. Is that true or false? Chitakasati chili, is that not correct? Is that correct? I hope you're not going to Yorobah church. We are the original children of heaven. That is why we are all blessed. That is why you can come to America and become, without missing words, the most advanced ethnic group here in America. Is that true or false? So you think you did it out of your own sheer strength? Because God is with you. Wherever you go, is that not what they says in the scriptures? I will bless you, is that not correct? But let us not talk our blessing into stupidity. That is why you must rise up to support IPOB. That is why you must do everything within your powers to ensure that Biafra comes. Because not Biafra, you are nothing. The same way it happened to the Jews of Europe, so shall it be with you if you don't do something now to arrest this very ugly situation. Because the Fulanis have come. Would, do you think Romaji will defend you? Does Romaji, will he defend you? Will Okazipas defend you? Will Okambo defend you? Who can defend you? Who can defend you?
IPOB.
Who can defend you?
IPOB.
The only reason why they came to kill me was because Yorobah men were behind it. Without the support of all these men, their roots are buried. Do you think these people that died don't have mothers and fathers and sisters and brothers like yourselves or children? They are not all young people. There were old people amongst those that fell. That is why we will not forgive nor forget. Their will be retribution. If you represent the interest of all these drug criminals, tell them that I said in New York that their will be there are elders here. How many of you here ask the governors why they sent people to come and kill us? How many of you here? Only one person at the back. Why come to ask these people, why they decided to come and kill us? Those who are fighting for you, for your survival as a race. Fulan have told you, you cannot produce a president. They did not find you fit to occupy any specific position in the zoo. They have come for your land, as well by force. And all the money that fuels the economy of that damnable zoological republic comes from Biafra land. What else are you looking for to convince you that you're not a Nigerian? Is there anything special you're looking for? Or are you waiting for people to be confirmed as vice president? What are you waiting for? I have a feeling and a suspicion that some of you in America wants our race in this state. I'm telling you the truth. My feeling tells me that some of you here in America, you hate yourself so much that you want the race of Biafra to be obliterated from the face of the earth. Do you think the Fulanis will stop coming? Do you think they'll stop coming one day? Do you think so? What are we going to do to stop them? What are we going to do to stop them?
Defend our land!
Are we going to fight them? Are we going to fight them? Are we going to fight them? Are you prepared to do all it takes? Are you prepared to do what it takes? There are two things you have to do. And the one, I have given you a very long date, our calendar. Have you secured, have you secured, have you made for that of July to March in Washington? Have we secured it? Have we, have we applied? Is there any reason why all of you cannot come to Washington? July the 20th, 2020? Any reason? Is anybody here who's unemployed? And there are people here who are unemployed, now act on, like America. I believe I'm always working. Can you take time off work? Can you take holiday, one day if there's a work? Are you sure? Can you take two days off work? Or after one week time? In America? So we can take two days off, yes?
Hundred percent.
Starting from today, because the whole world is listening to this very broadcast from Ben Yehudine, is that correct? The whole world is listening. And will be coming from all over the world.
Yes.
The rights you enjoy today in America can be distilled down to only one episode in the history of this country. That very march on Capitol Hill led by the very gallant and late Booker Martin Luther King Jr. That is why you have jobs in America. That was single march. And with our own single march, which we know will surpass that very march, not only will Biafra be free, but the whole of Africa will be free actually. I don't know what Washington will look like that very day. But I know that there are some of you that will write to US government and ask them not to allow us to come in on the 3rd of July. Before I came here, some of you were receiving WhatsApp messages and emails, is that correct? Since I've come, are you still receiving those messages? We are prepared to do everything humanly possible to restore Biafra. We have sacrificed in the past, we shall continue to sacrifice until Biafra is restored. And we are not rich. Everything I am wearing here, including these glasses, was given to me by IPOB family members. The reason why I said this, once you may have need for money, I don't. I have no need for a car. I have no need for a bicycle. I have no need for a mansion. Because the greatest mansion in so far as I'm concerned is the presence of Biafra. I have no savings. I have no savings. I have only one bank account with Lloyd C.S.P. in England. God answer. Because my covenant is with God in heaven. Every day I abandon Biafra. Every day I three months abandoning Biafra. If God does not wipe me out of my family, I know he is not God. I say, "Talat to God in heaven!" Oh, Malike! Thank you. And having said that, I thank those who organized this. The New York and New Jersey USA IPOB. This great family. I am a Christian. The man that follows that name is today a greater Christian than we are. They disguise what we have been telling them. Year after year after year after year, that the Fulanese will come, they will take your land, they will destroy you. Nobody bothered to listen. They said, "I'm looking for trouble." That I want to start a war. African so hate speech? War against hate speech? By Usip Anja and Mbakwembe clearly. They call it hate speech. When Fulanese are killing you, it is called love killing. When they destroy your farm produce and render asunder your means of livelihood, it is a love war, real farm.
Treat them with love.
Do you want to remain in Nigeria? I am asking the people here in New York City, do you want to remain in Nigeria? Because what I would tell you, all I can say to me, that is, "Well, we can do it." And I have. Because some of you love lies. I will know who are saying, "Ask him." I understand it very well. I hate lies and lies. If I come to US to see IPOB family, I will tell you in the open that every other substantive meeting that I may have with those that matter, that can move our cause forward, I will not tell you, Bob. For every picture that you see us pay and tweet, there are 20 more that we cannot tweet. I will talk about it. Anybody who brings lies and deception into Biafra repression, lies will cost you all the days of your life. Nobody had a covenant with God. Nobody from anywhere else did, apart from us in IPOB. We've been accused of everything, now in this Baruchosin, that we are under oath. If you are not under oath, I cannot help you. Do you understand me? If you are not under oath, I will not fuck with you. I am making it very, very clear. Because you will sell us. For 52 years, non-stop, they have been selling us every place in there, till now. And you want me to walk with you? That is this question I ask all the time. How many Igbo associations are successful in the whole world? Can you apply yourself? How many Igbo groups are successful, thank my king, my man? How many? Is that not correct?
Congratulations!
Somebody said, "We are family political journey IPOB." Because you don't know what will happen to us when we die. I said, "Do you know you're talking about IPOB?" The person said, "Yes," to me. And I said to them, or to him in particular, "What you should worry yourself about is, will your entire town contain us when we come?" Can that contain us when we come? Have you seen IPOB march before the road? Back home? I don't think so. When we march, the mountains fight it. Oh, but no one, Janice, also, I know me that's you. When those people march towards enough, I give you 14 days that the zoo will not exist, I assure you. Some of you in America have the same attitude, I preached this, I think it was in Chicago, that best slavery possible. That slavery was made a reality in the life of men is because of your attitude. This same attitude some of you are portraying. And that is why I have preached it before. But it appears that when the whites say that they are superior, that they are correct. Do you, who have been personally doing the African? When white people say they are superior to blacks, I believe them, that they are. Do you know why? They don't resist the way we do. They don't! When this country was under attack by the same Britain. Did they fight Britain or not? Do you know that those that fought Britain were British people? That came here to live a life of equal peace and equality amongst men? They fought. We are not even asking you to fight. We are not even asking you for your money. We are asking you for something that will not cost you anything, simple moral support you cannot give. What about this man you? Am I inviting you to go back home to go and fight? Some of you think that one day you rise up and you go home and your village will still be there? Who told you that ever in America? They are in a hurry. They need to, now, listen to me carefully. They need to round up very, very quickly, they have three and a half years to complete it. After that, they will hand over to us. By that time, Fulanese and your villages, they will say, "Oh, why are you complaining? But PTOB, your brother is the vice president now, so why are you complaining?" Are you following me? What I'm telling you is what is going to happen before it happens. Are you going to allow your place to take enough from you? Will you allow it? Who are those that fought? 67 to 70, I'll make you enjoy later. Just raise your hand up, don't stand up. Just raise your hand up. Do you know that you are alive today because of them? Do you know that? Because of the war they fought, that is why you are alive. I will tell you their plan. Do you see what is happening in the little bit now? How they slaughter entire communities, have you seen it? That was their plan. To kill everybody up until the age of 10. Then they now groom them to become good Muslims. You don't know that? These men, some of them are our fathers, fought and fought and fought and fought until Gogon accepted the terms of no victory or venge. You must understand this. So whenever you see a veteran, they are your safe here that you are seeing that same moment. And I call them the greatest army the world has ever seen. Because if you can fight Britain, Russia, Egypt, OAU, and the lukewarm attitude, or should I say, collaboration, conspiratorial, I used to have, of the USA, then you deserve every accolade that you get. I assure you. Nobody was able to do what we have done for three whole years to fight against the whole world and the prejudice. Sadly, those things that our parents fought and died for, some of you are carrying to bed. Why do you think we did not receive any help during the war? Bulgaria told Chief Justice P. K. Wokel in his face that one Japan is enough. They don't want another one. Who we are now, the late Justice P. K. Wokel of the Supreme Court. He was our special envoy to the Communist Conference in mid to far east of Europe. He wanted to look for help. Do you know what that thing taught me, the way, the day he told me this in MFA in London? I asked him, which of course he concord later, that some of the hatred you see against Biafra is not because of anything we may have done. They are afraid of what we, what they know that we are likely to become. Because in Biafra, we are to stand. We will build a hell of a building. We will build many cars. We will build skyscrapers. There is nothing a white man is who that we cannot do. Therefore, some people don't want this something to rise from Africa. But perhaps some of you are content with living the life of semi-slaves in America, but we are not. Do we know we are semi-slaves here? That you are here unfettered, free slavery? Are you aware of that? They came and took our ancestors, brought them here for 200 years of free labor. And after that, you volunteered yourself to continue where they left off. Very shameful and disrespectful. That is why in IPOB, we have honor and we have dignity. That is why we know that our worth can only be measured, not only by the restoration of Biafra. Piafran, but how well we go on to build Piafran. Piafran will not be like any other indigenous African country, I assure you. Can anybody tell me what the farm is contributing to Nigeria? Do you know the population? Do you know the population? And they are terrorizing all of us. Instead of us to join hands together and return them and fight them, we engage in picturing and fighting like people who cannot resist very well. All the Japanese navy, the farmers who are worse than Europe, I can understand it. They are the lowest of the low, they press cattle. They sleep with their cattle. They drink the urine of their cattle. And they are your lords and your masters. And you allow such nonsense to continue. You condone such idiocy. And then you rise up and tell me I live in America and I'm very proud. Never have been. It's a good thing for that, the fact is no one anybody. Because when I preach, there is hardly any good news in it. But the good news I'm giving you today is that Piafran must come. Piafran must come. My friend, if you have any, Piafran must come. You have another assignment apart from Washington 2020? You are going to pay for what you're going to do at home. Do you have a goal?
Yes.
We are rebel.
We said that you guys, I can't hear you. You got to move on, yeah? I didn't find that I can go, I didn't know. We want you to fund this very movement. I want America to fund IPOB. Can you do that? I can't do no better than monitor it. That can't, that can't. No more hitting this open and listening me, but I can't. Today, I've told you how much you have contributed in your defense fund, I'm sure that case is now very complicated. You are going to pay $1 every month. Yes. No, 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 $1, carry a little. I'm a carry a lot. And $1 is tax deductible, is that correct? So in actual fact, we will use the legal names of getting on Kosa to fund Piafran restoration.
Exactly, correct.
And those outside can't be angry, there are too many people outside. But why do we get such a place that cannot take off? I can't stand it. You're going to the stadium. Many people are outside and they are upset. Because last time our people understood the truth you have preached, they understand it, and they are responding accordingly. They must not be upset. IPOB! 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 One family, IPOB! I'm not an idiot, many of them, they are outside. They came, some of them must have come late. And beware that the door is closed tonight. The doors who are outside, who's anybody here? Beware the door is closed tonight, is how the door of Piafran will be closed, you have no body. That doesn't come now to support us. I know that, I won't do it. The motivation is. I will, what they say there, they say we have a singular capacity even. And they, no man get up beyond channel, they have completed. I don't recall any police. This man can't carry a van, more than five somebody's, yeah? Because if they know them now, and when they miss, we say that the police can't arrest me in New York. We only have one thing to do. I am asking each and every one of you here to contribute $1 tax deductible. In other words, you're not paying for it, on Kosa, please, to help restore Piafran. And not once you're contributing it, you're calculating how many people there are in the U.S. Oleka, you're in a disaster. People are coming in, that we have no more space, so we have to stand. But if I give my announcement, the nation, the government will also, maybe we need to announce the nation, so they're home, but they're playing, like a play. Because if we announce the nation, the nation now, we have never mind. They won't turn around and say. We are one family, and Piafran must be restored. I said before that anybody who doesn't believe in Piafran will not go to heaven.
Oh, come here.
Your mommy, they started complaining. They were asking me, do you have the keys to heaven? And I said the yes that I do, that that heaven is Piafran. Because our Lord prayed and he said, as it is in heaven, so shall it be on this very earth. So if there is heaven somewhere in heaven, there will look at, it's also heaven here on this very earth.
Yes.
And that heaven is Piafran. Do we have any doubts?
No.
Do we have any doubts?
No.
And we are going to Washington, July 13, 2020. Are you coming with us?
Yes.
Are you coming with us?
Yes.
From, would you say from next month? Every Piafran adult in the USA must set up a direct debit, of you and me, yeah?
Yes.
To contribute tax deductible $1 every placement. Those who need from you. And then you watch these who come. If you have more than that, you can also do. Leave on imagine that to the young again. So far, has IPOB gone when defending you back home?
Yes.
Has IPOB gone when defending you back home?
Yes.
Then you have no reason or excuse not to support us. Therefore, I say to all of you here gathered today, that what we are fighting for is not just self-determination. What we are fighting for is our freedom. We are fighting for the right to live as free men and free women in the land of our ancestors. Because when our ancestors occupied that very land for over 5,000 years, so shall we occupy it for another 5,000 years. I conclude this evening by praying, because some of you have some questions which I must That Chukwudika Piaman that started IPOB, because I did not. That the same Chukwudika Piaman that gave us BSS, that evil men destroyed. The same Chukwudika Piaman that kept us alive up until this very day will not only hear our prayers, but will give us Piafran in our lifetime. Oh, yes, in Piafran, there are Pia. China came to visit in New York. Oh, no, we are, we are Piafrans, we are not here, that young man. Don't let them go down, we're going to follow them.
Keep your call, eh?
We are going to march in this country that the world may know who we are, that the world may know we live in this very country, that humanity may bear testimony to the fact that a people from Africa came here and decided to stake a claim for their freedom in the land of the free. And that any obstacle, be that man-made or spiritual, standing in the way of Piafran, that very entity will fall. We have no need for Nigerians because we are Piafrans. And one day, Nigeria will be obliterated from the face of this very earth.
Yes.
Never to come back anymore.
Yes.
Therefore, I say to you here gathered, may the spirit of the Almighty, greater of the heavens and the earth, Chukwudika Piaman, who may any name, dwell within you and upon you, preserve and keep you, that you may all be alive to witness the coming of Piafran.
Yes.
IPOB!
One family.
IPOB!
One family.
IPOB!
One family.
One family.
IPOB.
One family. When I go to the end now, I can say before, when we came in here, I asked somebody to give us a number. IPOB!
One family.
IPOB!
One family.
IPOB!
One family.
All right. When I go to the end now, I can say before, when we came in here, I asked somebody to give us a number. Yeah, okay, I asked somebody to give us a numbers, and I have to bring you guys here. Big ol' look, listen to this. This is supposed to be question and answer time. And for them, they are late. Well, I don't know, you can say, this is why we say. What music is that? I'm being interrupted here. All right. Next time, I ask the good guy, I can draw Morocco, Cambodia. You are late, you are late. The door locked now, which one would be? I never know, but that. I want our, the zoo, we don't care if it's class or city. As a someone, somebody came to me today and asked me a question. He said, are you, are you put us, are you sitting in the van? I said, yes. And he says, I mean, you are doing your own thing. But we are here. Yes, we. Let me, let me stop by, I'm calling out. And people that have a number that want to speak, question, while we are. So please, if you want to ask a question, you have to make it very, very brief. No praises, nothing, just come here, ask your question. If it is the one he's going to answer immediately, he will. But if it's the one that requires you to, because a lot of people are going to come and ask the same thing over and over. So those that were given numbers, I don't know, do you have somebody who has number one that wants to ask a question? What's your number? Number one? All right, copy. Straight to the question, no talking.
One minute.
That's two minutes. I have Piafran. I have Piafran.
All in here.
Director, I want to welcome you to New York. I welcome. And God of heaven, who sent you to us. Thank God for all of you who came. I hope you come again, I see the meeting. Not to come and take picture with the director. Good morning. My question, sir. Is it possible that you have in a second meeting, where those of us are not coordinators, will be able to share?